And good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Agenda or Board Meeting for Tuesday, September 15th, 2020. If you'd like to join via conference call, go listen. Phone number is 360-252-9020 and your PIN is 1234. I am John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. Also present is Vice Chair Ty Mensah. And in the boardroom is Commissioner Gary Edwards. We also have the County Manager Romero Chavez and Amy Davis, the Clerk of the Board. And we have the Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell, joining us and a host of others that will be introduced as they come in to speak. So with that, I'm calling the meeting to order. At the end of this meeting are two back-to-back public hearings. One is on the Information Technology Audit and the other is the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. And they will follow right after this board meeting. With that, I'm going to ask the Vice Chair, Commissioner Mensah, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Are you muted? That's not going to work. All right, here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, is there a thinking? Is there a motion to approve today's agenda?
Move to approve agenda for Tuesday, September 15th, 2020.
It's been moved and seconded to approve today's agenda. Are there any amendments or changes to the agenda? Nope. All in favor, say aye. Aye, that motion carries. And approval of the board meeting minutes?
Move to approve board meeting minutes from September 1st, 2020 and September 8th, 2020.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the board meeting minutes for September 1 and September 8th, 2020. Any changes or corrections? Nope. All in favor, say aye. Aye, that motion carries. Thank you. Next is a presentation, and this is Emergency Services, which is very appropriate. And are you going to start for National Preparedness Month? Am I starting with you, Romero, or am I going right to Kurt?
Please go to Kurt. I think he has the, all that information that you need.
Kurt Harden, you are on, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon, Commissioners, and Kurt Harden, Director of Emergency Services. And I wanted to talk a little bit about National Preparedness Month, which is September. And it's very appropriate this year because we seem to be trying to decide how many disasters and emergencies we can fit into one year. We've had the flood in January and February, what is done in the Squali River. We've had the pandemic. We had fires last week. And so it's very important that we remind everyone in the county to be prepared. And I can't think of a better time than now to talk about National Preparedness Month. The theme for this year is disasters don't wait, make your plan today. And I'm going to go ahead and put information up and share my screen. So hopefully this will work. And what you should see is a slide that talks about National Preparedness Month. What we're going to talk about here is we've broken this down into weeks. And we're following the federal and state models. And week one was make a plan. We want people to make a plan, have families, have their emergency plan available, ready. And then week is build a kit. And so as we go through building a kit, you should be looking for two weeks, 14 days, to survive on your own before you can look for assistance from outside your household. Then week three is prepare for disasters. And then week four is prepared youth make for a more prepared community. What we want to do is, and this is every September, every year, we do National Preparedness Month. But again, this year, it seems more appropriate. And we're doing community outreach through traditional means and also through social media. We're following the federal and state themes and using their particular hashtags as we reach out. We want to share and encourage people to participate in the state's webinars hosted by, statewide by the Public Education Work Group. Now, this morning, I talked about our expo, our Preparedness Expo. Unfortunately, after given update, that Preparedness Expo has been postponed due to what's been happening this month with the smoke, the fires. Staff has just been tied up in the response activities that have been taking place. So the Emergency Management Council made a decision to reschedule the Preparedness Expo. We're going to try to look and see if we can do that in October during flood preparation week. But we're also looking at participating with Zoom meetings, with Map Your Neighborhood. So there's a lot of different areas. And on the slide in front of you has the contact information for Thurston County Emergency Management, where you can go to the website or you can make, call the office. And we can give you additional information on preparedness, how to get a plan, to put a kit together, and various other tips on preparedness. So with that, I want to wrap up and say that we should be prepared 12 months out of the year. But we're focusing on September as our month to make sure we have an emphasis and readiness.
Very nice, very nice, Kurt. Is someone going to read the proclamation then?
I can do that, Mr. Chair.
If you don't mind, thank you.
Absolutely. Thurston County Proclamation, National Preparedness Month, September 2020. Whereas national preparedness is recognized each September to promote family and community disaster planning throughout the year. And as our nation continues to respond to COVID-19, there is no better time to be involved. And whereas Thurston County has experienced disasters in the past, and evidence indicates the county remains vulnerable to natural and human-caused disasters in the future. And whereas the residents of our county need to prepare themselves to be self-sufficient for a minimum of two weeks following a disaster. And whereas county agencies and employees should be prepared so they may continue to provide essential public services after a disaster and support the county's disaster response and recovery mission. Now therefore, be it resolved with the National Preparedness Month theme of disasters don't wait, make your plan today. The Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of September 2020 as National Preparedness Month. We urge all citizens to take steps to prepare their homes, businesses, and schools for disasters and emergencies. Adopted this 15th day of September, 2020.
Hey, there you go. Kurt, you will, you will receive this signed copy suitable for framing down to, down on Tilly in your office. And I'm turning to my seatmates. Commissioner Edwards, do you have any comments for Kurt?
Nothing other than we ought to always be ready.
Mr. Mensah, anything relevant to this?
Just that my first year in office, I got a chance to see the preparedness. We did our, our exercise in Ocean Shores and I got, I was new, I was onboarding, I was touring and meeting the people in Kurt's team. And so, you know, you see the preparedness. And then this year, unfortunately, to see it all spring into action has been, it's been great to, to see that, you know, see that connection between the preparedness and the response. I've been proud of the team. And so, yeah, hopefully we can, the expo was great last year and hopefully it'll be great this year by, even if it's virtual, which I think is the plan, right, Kurt?
That's what we're looking for. We're going to try to do it and see if we can do it in October.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Kurt, I would add, you nailed it. In 2020, we had flood, we have fire. Now, we're currently dealing with the smoke issue. And we have a pandemic. We still have three and a half months left of this year, though. We can squeeze one or two more in. I'm not saying I want it, but I think with you at the helm and whatever the type of disaster it could be, our county staff, we're going to rise to the occasion and take care of business. You give me great comfort and the county, all citizens of the county should be thanking you as well and feel comfortable that you're at the helm. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that I'm just the spokesperson for a great team. There's a great team of emergency management staff back there who make it all happen. I just get the opportunity to come forward and say a few things every now and then.
No, good. I'm glad you said that because there always, always are everybody behind us pushing. So thank you. Well, now to item number one on the agenda, which is the opportunity for the public to address the board. And please introduce yourself when you come up, including where you reside in the county. Please address the board, not the audience or staff. Silence your cell phones if you haven't already. And the board does not respond to public comment. But the county manager, however, will follow on needed, on an as-needed basis. Speakers are limited to three minutes to address the board and you're not allowed to donate your speaking time to another. The board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for good cause. We ask you, please be respectful. No comments that elude, offensive, inflammatory, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. No comments that are commercial in nature, such as a promotion for a for-profit business. Remarks about pending land used similar matters that could eventually come before the board on appeal are not appropriate. And any and all materials provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 42.56 of the RCW. And so with that, I have the sign-up list. And I'll read the names on the sign-up list to come up and speak. After that, we'll check and see who else might be on Zoom and/or on the phone that may want to speak as well. So first on the sign-up sheet is John Pettit.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I live on Rich Road. And I am bringing something I've talked about before back to some awareness. And when I say that, I'm saying it in respect to the fact that the county is currently going through and still allowing some budget reductions from the 2020 budget. And those budget reductions have reduced service levels for the taxes that we paid. I'm going to encourage that you very soon rescind those budget reductions. And I, I'm encouraging in a couple of respects, as I've been kind of occupied the last couple of weeks. And I committed to you that I was going to take some action to have the property tax levies actually adjudicated and found to be illegal so you can refund the property tax. That wouldn't be necessary if you return the, if you return and put back into effect the budgets that were originally approved and the taxes were based upon. That being said, I think that it is important. I appreciated the comment about being prepared for an emergency. The county looks like they may be doing something to prepare for an emergency next year with their budget, to create a fund when you actually have an emergency occur. A spot to go to when those times happen. Up to this point, the county hasn't taken any action of that nature. It's time. There is a process. But one of the aspects to this is that we, we do need some extra money available when an emergency comes up. We can't be thinking, oh, we're going to have to bond for this or we're going to have to bond for that. Now, currently, unknown to most people in the county, the county's revenue source is actually higher right now than was estimated at the time the 2020 budget was approved back in 2019. I'm looking forward towards the, another week and a half or so, and we'll get some new sales tax figures, which will probably indicate we've exceeded the expectations and the forecasted amount. And we'll be elevating it again above that amount. There is no reason based upon current revenues for the county that you should have reduced anybody's budgets, any of the elected officials' budgets. And you need to provide the services that you basically contracted to the people with your tax levies. Or you need to refund and allow those budgets to go back into effect as they were designed in 2019. Thank you.
That exhausts the list of people that have signed up. I'll turn to the County Manager. Romero, is there anybody on Zoom?
Nobody on the Zoom, but I believe we have members of the public who would like to testify via conference call.
Good. If they, if you're invited to speak, their name and spell their last name for me, I'll write it down for the record here. Thank you.
For those members of the public who have joined us via conference call and would like to testify this afternoon, please unmute yourself, state your name, where you reside in the county, and you will have three minutes.
And you'll manage the time.
I'm Suzanne Klein, and I would like to have the opportunity to speak. I live on the west side of Olympia on Black Lake. I'm a Lakefront resident on Black Lake.
Please go ahead.
Oh, okay. I am Suzanne Klein, co-chair of Citizens for a Clean Black Lake. I have lived on Black Lake for over 28 years. I am in opposition to approval of the bond for the alum treatment and to ask the county to dissolve the special district and create a lake management district. In 2013, three district commissioners were appointed by the county. In 2016, an election for three district commissioners were held. And Lake St. Zee received 62 votes and Vernon Bonfield received 105 votes out of 198 cast. One district commissioner, Brian Womalski, was appointed. However, there were 1,340 people and 680 parcels. And you would have thought more votes would have been cast. All of the three district commissioners own at least one acre of lakefront property, valued at between $600,000 and $800,000. They represent a small segment of district lake residents. As lakefront property owners, my husband, Gary, and I did not receive a notice for the elections. Besides a letter from the district on August 7th, 2019, letting us know how much they appreciated the septic system services we perform. We've only received a few notification cards listing the dates of planned chemical spraying, none of which had mailing dates. We strongly object to the frequent use of glyphosate and other chemicals by the district, which goes against their own aquatic vegetation plan. That called for mechanical harvesting after two years of herbicide applications. Glyphosate causes cancer and Bayer Monsanto is dealing with 125,000 lawsuits over that. Use of glyphosate is now a severe global problem and arguably the next pandemic because of the destruction of most of the world's food-growing soils. Why should we use it on Black Lake? If we held it on Black Lake, this plan could not spread and be used on other lakes. The Black Lake Coalition is the nonprofit organization that preceded the district's formation, of which the present board were members. Their primary objective, as stated on their website, is to keep our lake water clean of noxious weeds, invasive species, and nuisance weeds that prevent lake enjoyment and jamming roads and waterways.
Ma'am, your three minutes are up. Please wrap it up.
Can I just end it there with my ending statement there?
Yeah, you have another 30 seconds.
Okay, well, the commissioners already have a copy of it, but the audience doesn't. But if they'd like to request a copy of this to complete my talk, thank you. email at zudanklein@gmail.com. And my closing statement is please deny the bond and form a true lake management district to clean up Black Lake environmentally safe.
Thank you. Please mute yourself. Is there anybody else via conference call who would like to make a testimony?
Yes, I am. Jerry Duncan. I'm from, also from the west side of Olympia here. All right. And I join with, with two previous persons talking about the Black Lake issues. And I, I had joined with Esther in the written testimony she had submitted here. And I want to point out the significant portions of the record that the Black Lake District itself has on its own website that you could find. That they, they already decided not, they, that, there's a resolution that they had created, that Craig Ottavelli, an attorney here in town, had helped them put together, that said that they will continue to operate pursuant to RCW 8538, which is the dyking. And, and shall also determine to operate pursuant to RCW 8609 flood control districts. But they say BSLD, that's the Black Lake Special District, shall continue with its stated purpose of engaging in activities as like, as a lake management district. They're not a lakes management district and cannot be considered one. They are a flood control district, as it says, 89, or a, a, a dyking district. Okay, that's all they could do. And as they say here, BSLD does not intend to engage in flood control except to the extent of encouraging Thurston County to fulfill its obligations to maintain stormwater flow into and out of Black Lake to minimize flooding. That's ridiculous. They can only do flooding. They can only do ditches and dikes. They have no jurisdiction over the lake at all. Zero. Nada. Okay, you cannot do that under the law. So therefore, this would be manifestly unlawful and manifestly unreasonable for the Thurston County Commissioners to go ahead now and, and, and say that, that they can have a bond based upon this statute. Since apparently, they have never done anything on that. And they never, for flood control or dyking and ditching, that they only did this so that they could get around the lakes management district laws and stuff that require the public to be in control of these matters and stuff. So this is clearly a perpetrated a fraud. And the, I realize that you guys didn't do this. This was created by a, a prior administration. Okay, and, and even the, the prior $790,000 or so that was used on the prior alum treatment and, and these, these illegal and unlawful uses of herbicides on the, on the lake here.
I live in unincorporated Thurston County, and I would like to speak in opposition to the Black Lake Special District's request for a bond finance, a chemical treatment to control algae in Black Lake, a water body that is owned by the Department of Natural Resources, not the lake owners. My understanding is that this chemical treatment to control weeds would be a short-term fix according to a Herrera September 2019 study. Stormwater runoff was a primary source of phosphorus and E. coli input into Black Lake. Therefore, that should be what is being addressed as opposed to a short-term fix with a chemical I would suggest that the county have an environmental review, a site-specific environmental review to come up with a more comprehensive, long-term plan and report back to the, to the public, which would be ultimately responsible potentially for the financial obligations posed by this bond. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public testimony this afternoon? Here in none, I really appreciate your engagement. Thank you, sir.
That takes us to item number two on the agenda, which is the county manager's update.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. As you heard from Ms. Sestberg.
Lois Farrell.
Has left the conference.
Goodbye, fellas.
Let me, let me fix that for a second. Okay, hopefully that will work. So I will be providing a response to the written comments that we have received related to the Black Lake special use district. And I will use my response next week to address the comments that you have received today related to this matter.
And next is a resolution recognizing public health and social services staff.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. As a matter of background, the state of Washington is served by 35 county and multi-county local health jurisdictions. Local health jurisdictions are comprised of local public health officials, public health staff, including Board of Health, health officers, administrators, public health nurses, epidemiologists, community health educators, and environmental health workers, making up the force of about 3,000 in the state of Washington. The pandemic caused by the spread of coronavirus COVID-19 has created a significant disruption to healthcare systems, education systems, businesses, economies, government, and the everyday life of individuals throughout our communities, the state, country, and around the world. And the spread of COVID-19 poses significant risks to everyone in and all the facets of our community. Local public health officials who serve in Washington State local, states, 35 local health jurisdictions are working tirelessly to carefully and efficiently, effectively ensure that COVID-19 is contained, traced, tracked, and treated in a manner to limit the spread of this deadly infection. Our public health officials, including our staff, perform their work at times with the risk of personal exposure to COVID-19. Local public health officials and staff are navigating unprecedented challenges related to preventing exposure to and the spread, and preventing the spread of COVID-19 to keep our residents healthy and safe. So the selfless efforts and sacrifices the Thurston County Public Health and Social Services officials, directors, public health officer, as well as the staff and nurses, are there serving an acknowledgement of appreciation by the Board of County Commissioners. Via this resolution, the Board of County Commissioners and the residents of Thurston County expresses great appreciation and heartfelt gratitude to our public health and social services officials and staff for their selfless sacrifices and efforts to combat and respond to the unprecedented challenges facing our community as a result of COVID-19. The Board of County Commissioners and the residents of Thurston County recognizes the value and dedication of our public health and social services officials and staff to the viability, economy, safety, and well-being of our community, both through their outstanding performance during this pandemic and through their general ongoing work to keep our residents healthy and our communities vibrant and thriving. Shelley Slater, the Public Health and Social Services Director, is here in person. I will ask her to come to the podium for you to publicly acknowledge. And I believe we have, let me switch the screen because we have quite a few members of the public health and social services staff. They are part of this Zoom meeting to give the board the opportunity to hear directly from you, your appreciation for their efforts.
Beautiful.
Go. Hold on. Yep. So for your consideration, is this a resolution, if the board would like to take action on that?
All right. Before we take action on it, comments from Commissioner Edwards or questions?
Well, just to comment, I don't have any questions. There's no doubt about it that these folks are going above and beyond, and I just want to tell Shelley and her crew, thank you very much for dealing with these unprecedented times that none of us could have ever expected that we would be dealing with some months ago. So we're all getting through it as best we can. Sometimes we get direction from the governor that we may or may not agree with, but we have to follow the best science that's available to us. And we don't always understand that. And boy, anytime you don't understand things, you get a lot of public pushback. So thank you for everything that you folks are doing and putting up with.
Commissioner Menchur?
Just ditto to all of that. We, I know the board appreciates the effort and the success, frankly. It's been, in my, in my opinion, humble opinion, a very successful effort that Thurston County has had in combating coronavirus and COVID-19. And I'm proud of that, but it's just really just being proud of you guys because you're the ones doing the work, responding to the challenges, working, you know, I, I know in the early weeks, I don't think, I remember the meetings that I was attending at the EOC and Dr. Yu talking about the sprint versus the marathon and all of that, and I, you know, and I just, so I just participated yesterday in the opioid task force, and, and they had a presentation from someone at the state that's done some research on, I, I don't know the terminology, but it's basically, they've studied all sorts of disasters all over the world, and there's like this really regularized fatigue cycle that people go through in, in dealing with this. Shelley was there, I know, and I'm not sure who else was there, but it follows a pattern, and the first few months are kind of, everybody's excited and energized and rising to the challenge. And then there's the graph, just this precipitous decline, and about six to nine months in is when things get really kind of at their lowest point. And then they, and then people, people acclimate, and then they, they come out of it stronger than ever. So we're getting near that point where it's getting very difficult. And, and so we were talking about it in the context of the stress on people and how it might affect opioid use and addiction and deaths and stuff, but it's relevant, obviously, to this, directly relevant to this in terms of the hard work our team is doing and how much support they're going to need to get through this sort of bottoming out of, of the fatigue and the, and the effort that's involved in sustaining this kind of a response. So hang in there, and you have the full support of the board, and we thank you every day for the risk you take and the successes that you have. So I just appreciate it.
So this, this is, these remarks are for not only Shelley Slater, the director, and for Thurston County Health Officer, Dr. Demiana Abdi-Malik, but also for all the staff. Because I know for you, and for me, this is the first pandemic we've dealt with, there was a tremendous number of hours that you've been putting in on this effort. You were understaffed early on, overwhelmed and understaffed, but you stepped up to the plate and you continue to do so for all the citizens in Thurston County. In addition, on top of dealing with lakes and algae bloom, septic issues, all the restaurant inspections when they start opening up, and sidewalk openings and closings, and now the air quality, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You're continually proving your mettle, and I am, I am utterly and undyingly grateful. And I would hope that Thurston County, as well as equally grateful for all that you're doing out there to keep us safe and protect us. So thank you very much. This is very well deserved. And now is there a motion to accept this resolution or pass this resolution?
Maybe Shelley can provide some feedback if you don't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry. Of course.
Yes, I would love to. And thank you so much, commissioners and Mr. Chavez, for your kind words. It is such an honor to be here and receive this resolution and be present for this resolution on behalf of our entire department at Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. This means so much to us because of the people before you on the screen and over 100 others in our department who are right now at this very minute out and doing work to protect the health and well-being of our community, including to respond to COVID-19. Every single day for the last 223 days have been in response. Our incident management team has been activated. Our staff have worked tirelessly. They have worked seven days a week. They are on call all the time, 24/7, and have had to step up and do things that none of us ever thought we would have to learn or we would have to, have to do. And our staff, when they join our department, they pledge to serve in the event of a public health emergency, but never in our lifetimes did we think we would have a global pandemic of this magnitude. And here in Thurston County, we have done a tremendous job and have done amazing work. The staff before you and the staff behind the scenes every day have been on the front lines keeping Thurston County safe. Thurston County has fared very well among our other fellow local health jurisdictions across the state, and that's really because of the work and commitment and dedication of the staff and the sacrifices that they made for their own families. When everyone else stayed home, our staff kept coming in, and they did put themselves at risk at times of COVID-19, a novel coronavirus that we were still learning a lot about. We're still learning every day, and they still do that. People are tired, and public health professionals have been beat up a bit, but we keep doing it because we care about Thurston County. We're here to protect the health and well-being of all of our residents here. We're going to keep on doing it every, every day, every night. And so if you see a public health and social services professional here in Thurston County, please tell them thank you. Please thank their families. I thank all of them, even though I can only see many of them virtually because we are all leading by example with physical distancing and protecting others. But I just want to say thank you so much to the board for your support, to our county leadership, for your amazing support. We, we feel it every day. And thank you, thank you to our, thank you to our team, thank you to our staff. Take care, keep up the good work. It's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Ray, do you have something that you'd like to say?
I would like to thank, I would like to thank all of you commissioners for this, for this proclamation, and I would like to echo what Shelley said. I'm a latecomer to the party, so I joined on July 1st, and I could not have imagined working with a more incredible group of people than the Thurston County Public Health and Social Services Department. The dedication that I've seen, the camaraderie, as well as just the vast, you know, expertise and dedication that we have in our department has been really impressive, and I feel so fortunate to be able to consider all of these folks here, my colleagues. Thank you.
No, thank you, Doc. And I just might add, I'll throw this in, that Shelley and then Doc, you've been working, getting, receiving information from the national level, working with the state health department, working with each individual city within Thurston County, working with all the restaurants that are coming to you, the hoteliers, when can we open up our pools? What can we open? Can we have a food service or not? The schools, when do we open? How do we open? How do we do this? The various markets, supermarkets, and farmers' markets, and rules regarding those, and the various sundry stores. And as you give the information out, as people are coming to you, wondering where do we go? What can we do? What shouldn't we do? The information changes. Soon as you get it set, it changes again. The course of the river changes, and you've been very fluid in that regard and putting up a lot of stress and maybe guff, but you're professionally getting it through this. And I, I just hope people really appreciate our Public Health and Social Services Department and all of our staff. Thank you all. So is our motion?
Yes, sir.
Do we move to accept? Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm going to approve a resolution recognizing our public health and social services officials and staff for their ongoing efforts in responding to the COVID-19 emergency.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt this resolution. Any further comment from my seatmates? Nope? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Public Health and Social Services, very much.
Thank you.
Get to work.
Thank you all.
That takes us to agenda item number three, which is the consent items A through F. And is there a motion?
I move to approve consent items 3A through F.
Second.
It's been moved, yes, again, to approve consent items A through F. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and motion carries. Thank you. Department item, that's number four on the agenda, Community Planning and Economic Development Contract with Ego Northwest. And we've got Chris Chapo. Here we go, Chris.
Yes, thank you. Christina Chapo, Senior Planner with Community Planning. I'll just provide a bit of background for the commission and the public. On June 16th of 2020, the Board of County Commissioners approved the issuance of a request for proposal, an RFP, for an economic study for, of the county's habitat conservation plan. The RFP was advertised in the Olympian on June 19th, 2020, and ran through July 31st of 2020. The county received a total of three proposals to complete the study. Ego Northwest proposals scored the highest in our internal review of these proposals. The proposed economic study is part of our ongoing work to secure a Section 10 incidental take permit under the Endangered Species Act for a period of 30 years. The contract will be completely funded using money secured from a Section 6 federal grant, also known as the HCP Phase 4 grant. The study will provide findings of the economic effects resulting from the proposed multi-species HCP for Thurston County. The work will include an assessment of the economic effects to property owners seeking to develop land under the HCP as compared to our current permitting process, the economic effects from placing land into preservation status, and the overall effects to the local economy from the proposed HCP over the next 30 years. This project supports county strategic initiatives number six and number seven. And with that, I'll ask if there's any questions I can answer.
Commissioners, Commissioner Menchur, any questions with Chris?
No.
Commissioner Edwards?
No, sir. Adequately covered. Good job, Chris.
No, sir. Adequately covered. Good job, Chris.
Great. Thank you, Chris. And is there a motion?
I move to award the contract with Eco Northwest for Habitat Conservation Plan Economic Study in the amount of $74,988 and authorize the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development to execute the contract and amendments for future time extensions and allow for this project up to 10% of the contract.
Second.
It's been moved, yes, second to approve the contract with Eco Northwest for Habitat Conservation. Uh, any further discussion? Nope. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Item number five on the agenda is Public Health and Social Services approving a shelter program grant. And we've got Tom Webster, Social Services Program Specialist Two.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Tom Webster with Public Health and Social Services. So this year, the Washington State Department of Commerce has funded a new program called the Shelter Program Grant for the purposes of supporting counties to create additional shelter beds for people experiencing homelessness. And this program provides funding for a three-year period beginning August of 2020 through June 30th of 2023. Thurston County was an allotted award of $1,514,893 for this program. And we submitted through, working through the Regional Housing Council, submitted an application on July 31st. So requesting your approval to sign a contract with the Department of Commerce to receive these grant funds. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, uh, commissioners?
Oh, sir.
Nope. All right. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the Shelter Program Grant Contract, number 21-4610C-116, with the Washington State Department of Commerce for $1,514,893 over a three-year period. And authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the contract as well as future amendments that do not change the approved dollar amount by more than 10%.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the Shelter Program Grant with, uh, the state DOC. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye. That motion carries. Five B is, uh, similar, I missed, that's connected to A. And this is the approved Shelter Program Grant with Family Support Center and Interfaith Works. Go ahead, Tom.
Great, thank you. So with those, uh, Shelter Program Grant Funds that you just approved the county to sign with Commerce, we would like to award two contracts for the use of these funds. One contract to Family Support Center of South Sound to create 10 new shelter beds for a contract value of $627,520. And a second contract with Interfaith Works to create 15 new shelter beds. And the value of that contract will be $887,373. Both of these contracts will run through June 30th of 2023. And they're in line with Strategic Plan Initiative Three. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, any questions or comments for Tom?
No.
I would just add, Tom, this, uh, this is crazy. It's crazy good. Twenty, adding 25 additional shelter beds. That's wonderful.
Yes, it is.
Thank you for your efforts on this. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Shelter Program Grant Contracts with Family Support Center of South Sound and Interfaith Works totaling $1,514,893 and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the contracts as well as future amendments that do not change the dollar amount approved by more than 10%.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Shelter Program Grants with FSC and South Sound, of South Sound and Interfaith Works. Uh, any further discussion? Nope. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six is Public Works, a resolution for a non-exclusive franchise to the Olympic Pipeline Company LLC. And we have Craig Sisson.
Thank you, commissioners. I am Craig Sisson. I am the Real Estate Services Manager for Public Works. Uh, the Olympic Pipeline Company LLC has applied for a non-exclusive 10-year franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a liquid petroleum products pipeline within Thurston County Rightway known as George Road, Manki Road, Coppin Road, 133rd Avenue, Vale Cut Off Road, Johnson Creek, Skookum Truck Road, Thompson Creek Road, Waddle Road, 138th Avenue, 133rd Avenue, Military Road, Stedman Road, Equus Lane, 89th Avenue, Marie Street, Rich Road, Diagonal Road, Defiance Street, and Old Highway 99, and Armstrong Road. This franchise is a replacement for the original franchise granted in 1964. This franchise will allow the continued use of existing pipeline and allow maintenance to continue as needed. This franchise covers the crossings of the aforementioned rightway and is part of the larger pipeline easement that crosses private and public properties across the county. The pipeline is of regional importance, stretching from Watkin County to Portland, Oregon. A public hearing on the application for the franchise was held by the Board of County Commissioners on September 8th, 2020. Board of County Commissioners approved the franchise application of the Olympic Pipeline Company LLC for a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a liquid petroleum products pipeline. The Board of County Commissioners will need to act on the resolution to grant the franchise to Olympic Pipeline Company LLC for a non-exclusive franchise for a liquid petroleum products pipeline within designated Thurston County Rightway for a term of 10 years. The non-exclusive franchise process for a liquid petroleum products pipeline is consistent with the county's strategic plan and aligns with Initiative Six to proactively shape a strong, diverse economy that provides equitable access to opportunity. And I'm here for any questions, if you have any.
Uh, any questions of Craig? Nope. All right. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution granting the Olympic Pipeline Company LLC a non-exclusive franchise for liquid petroleum products pipeline within designated Thurston County Rightway for a term of 10 years.
Second.
It's been moved, yes, second to approve a resolution for a non-exclusive franchise to the Olympic Pipeline Company LLC. Any further discussion? Nope. Uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Next is, uh, Steel Public Works. It's setting a public hearing for the closure of a portion of 188th Ave, Southwest. And we got Becky. Is Becky here?
It's actually going to be Matt today.
Oh, Matt. Go ahead, Matt.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Matt Unsman, um, Traffic Engineering Operations Manager in Thurston County Public Works. In 2012, the Chehalis Tribe, um, completed a safety evaluation of US 12 in the vicinity of the Lucky Eagle Casino. Um, this study was done in participation with Thurston County Public Works and the Washington State Department of Transportation. The results, uh, the recommendations coming from the study included two roundabouts to be installed on US 12. The first roundabout would be at US 12 and Anderson Road. The second roundabout would be at the intersection of US 12 and Moon Road. When WashDOT began to actively engage the local community regarding the planned improvements, um, a lot of the outreach, um, and the, a lot of the feedback, uh, received, um, regarding improvements included the, the concern that local traffic would bypass those two roundabouts on, um, local county roads to get to the casino. WashDOT evaluated the traffic patterns in the area and came to the conclusion that if the county were to close a portion of 188th Avenue, um, just west of Moon Road, um, that, uh, this would accomplish two things. One, it would, um, prevent people from bypassing, um, the roundabouts using local roads to get to the casino. But it would also, um, uh, allow for the roundabout at US 12 and Moon Road not to be constructed and save the state $1.2 million. So in December of 2018, the Board of County Commissioners sent a letter to the Chehalis Tribe in support of the closure of 188th West and Moon Road. And this closure would extend, um, for those of, uh, you that are familiar with the area, it would extend to the employee parking lot, which is east of the casino. Uh, once, uh, the county has, um, formally authorized the closure of 188, um, we will then enter into an agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation, which will give us $435,000 to complete the design and construction of the closure of 188th Avenue. So the county has completed the first step in the state law process laid out for closing roads in that we've completed the engineering, uh, report that supports the closure of 188th Avenue. And the reason I'm here today is to, the second step includes setting a public hearing to receive comment, um, regarding the closure. So the public hearing we're requesting is for the date of October 6th, um, again, to consider the partial closure of 188th Avenue. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Matt?
No. I, I would say we've been going over this for several years. And he's done a good job explaining it.
Yes, thank you, Matt. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would move to set a public hearing date for October 6th, 2020 at 3:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard in room 280, Building 1 of the County Courthouse, 2000 Lakewood Drive Southwest, Olympia, Washington, to formally receive testimony and consider the proposed closure of a portion of 188th Avenue Southwest.
Second.
It's been moved, yes, second to set a public hearing for the closure of a portion of 188th Ave, Southwest for October 6th, 2020 at 3:00 PM. Any, uh, further discussion? Nope. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Matt, very much.
Thank you, commissioners.
That takes us to item number seven on the agenda where the commissioners were reporting on their, uh, uh, our work assignments and committee meetings and such. I'll start with the Commissioner Edwards.
Well, you know, we've got about 30 seconds to go to our public hearing and I'm just going to let it go. And I attended all my meetings by Zoom. I will say, not very exciting when you attend them by Zoom. But, uh, nothing to report earth-shattering. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Mensah?
Uh, a lot of criminal justice stuff, uh, from the opioid task force to the innovative justice meeting to the, to a follow-up meeting on our, uh, Resource Hub project to a subcommittee from WASAC, that's the Washington State Association of Counties that I'm participating in on criminal justice reform. And, uh, I was, I was pleased to be able to convince the group to, uh, include a mental health, uh, priority focus piece to that, um, to the criteria that we're developing. So I thought that was useful. And spoke to the Rochester Chambers, I try to do each month, and attended, uh, the usual WASAC, uh, webinars on COVID updates. And on Saturday night, got to attend a, uh, fun, virtual fundraising event for Grub, our urban, uh, farm, uh, on the west side of Olympia. And they had some really cool stuff, including a video from Neil Young that he, uh, contributed of him playing, acoustic in, on his porch with a bunch of chickens running around, his song Homegrown.
That's funny. Uh, I did an interview with Ken Bosley, uh, coffee with Ken at KGY last week, an hour long. Uh, participated in the Criminal Justice Subcommittee Meeting and, uh, our ongoing LEFF one, that's L E O F F, which is Law Enforcement, Officers and Firefighters, uh, One Disability Board Meeting. And then, uh, participated in the WASAC Virtual Assembly. We talked about various issues surrounding Corona, uh, the coronavirus relief fund monies and the timelines and including nonprofits. And with that, that's all I have. County Manager, turning to you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. Um, let me walk you through your combined schedule for the upcoming week, where at least two commissioners will be present. You may have individual appointments on your individual calendars. Those will not be part of my report. As soon as this meeting is concluded, you'll have a public hearing. Will you be, be receiving public testimony related to an IT Security Performance Audit Report performed at the State Attorney's Office? Soon after that, you will have another public hearing, and this is related for you to receive public testimony on the proposed six-year Transportation Improvement Program for the years 2021 through 2026. Tomorrow, Wednesday, September 16th, at 9:00 in the morning, you have a briefing related to open space applications in Thurston County, followed by 9:30, uh, with the 2020 Conservation Future Proposals. 10:30 tomorrow, uh, September 16th is the, uh, Wyra Watershed Plan. We had to cancel that last week. And this is a rescheduled for the briefing from last week. At noon tomorrow, September 16th, you have your monthly elected officials meeting. Well, you will have an open forum to discuss matters with your fellow elected officials here in the county. 1:30 in the afternoon tomorrow, September 16th, you have a special Board of Health, uh, meeting. We, and the agenda has been posted already. And, uh, follow, uh, to the special board meeting, you will have a Board of Health, a special work session related to racial equity and, uh, next steps to develop on that initiative. Thursday, September 16th, uh, 8:30, um, I believe Commissioner Hutchins and Commissioner, um, uh, Mensah attends the Washington State Association of Counties Regular Board of Directors Meeting. Or is it just Commissioner Hutchins? I'm not sure, because I have it on the master calendar. But anyways, it's there. Uh, also, we need to see if, uh, if we still need this budget work session. That is scheduled 9:00 in the morning. I will touch base with Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell, to see if we have items to discuss in the matter. If not, we'll cancel it. And at 6:00 in the afternoon, Thursday, September 16th, you have been invited to participate on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee and, uh, Management Plan Online Forum. And that is, they're going to go through the, uh, Management Plan, uh, on an online via Zoom. And Friday, September 18th, you have your steady, uh, monthly meeting at 8:00 in the morning in South County. Moving on to Monday, September 21st, at noon, you have your, uh, Washington State Association of County Virtual Assembly to touch base with your fellow elected officials across the state on the COVID-19-related matters. And then you will convene, uh, back here Tuesday, September 22nd, at 9:00 in the morning for your regular agenda setting. That's all I have for you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, my, my seatmates, do you have anything for the good of the order? Nope? Okay. Go ahead.
Quick, uh, Romero, do you, uh, I, I understood that all the commissioners were invited to the Agricultural Advisory Committee Special Meeting on Thursday night. I was planning to attend, so I don't know if any of the other commissioners were. We might need to put that on the calendar.
Yes, I was planning on attending. And I'm told it'll be on the master calendar.
Thank you. We'll add it to the master calendar. Thank you, Commissioner.
That's on Thursday?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, uh, I'll be, uh, with the RHC meeting. I don't know what time the, uh, that, that event is that you're speaking of. Okay.
Seven to nine.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Romero, do you need, uh, time to set up? Or are we going to go right into the public hearing?
No, we need, you, you need to close this meeting as we have a different Zoom meeting for the public hearings.
Then this, uh, this meeting of the V O C C for September 15th is adjourned.